For the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Pro Tem Osnick will now give the invocation.
The decisions we have here have to be fair and just for all. Amen.
Okay, roll call, please.
Backley, Ambrose, Costanzo, Locke, Lublin, Osnick, Robertson.
Okay, we have a quorum. Are there any requests for agenda changes?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have two agenda items I'd like to add. What I'd like to add is item number two in unfinished business, the discussion on sidewalks and crosswalks across our city.
Excuse me, what?
Sidewalks.
And crosswalks.
Okay.
And add as item number three in unfinished business, the Supreme Court ruling, Reed versus Towne-Gilbert, and our signed ordinance.
That's under new business you want?
No, as item number three under unfinished business.
Unfinished? Okay, is there anybody else have anything? Okay. Approval of the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2019?
So move. Support.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The minutes as presented to us for approval tonight, I feel that there's rumors and significant omissions to the record, and for that I'm opposed to the approval of the minutes.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Ambrose, Costanzo, Locke, Lublin, Osnick, Robertson, Backley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into audience participation. Why don't you go ahead and read the audience participation rules if you would, please?
There shall be one agenda item for audience participation immediately following the approval of the minutes. When a person desires to speak, he or she must first be recognized by the mayor, then stand and state his or her name and address. Individual persons shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such a period of time is extended by a majority vote of the council. No member of the audience may speak more than once without the consent of a majority of the council present. No member of the audience may speak during any other part of the meeting without majority consent of the council present. Members of council may direct a question to a member of the audience after recognition by the chair, and that person may give an answer. At the discretion of the chair, members of the audience addressing council shall come before the podium.
Okay, thank you. Okay, when you come up to speak, again, please give your name, your address, write it on the slip of paper, and the length of time is three minutes, so if you can hold it as close to three minutes, I'm not going to cut you out in the middle of a word, but try to wrap it up. Okay? There's a lady there in the black and white, please.
My name is Dee Profit Aegis. I've lived in and around Wall Lake for my entire life. I went to Wall Lake, all the Wall Lake schools from elementary to high school, graduating from Wall Lake Western in the 70s. I went to college at OU, earned a bachelor's degree, all the while while living in Wall Lake. I raised both my kids here, both of them graduated from Wall Lake Western just like me. My dad, Paul Profit, was a local builder, building inspector, who actually took part in building the original library and police station in the old part of the building back in the day. Wall Lake's my home now, always has been, always will be. The reason I'm here tonight is to speak on, oh, I'm sorry, my address is I live on Lookout Drive in Wall Lake. The reason I'm here tonight is to speak out on the misinformation and ignorance surrounding the question of the marijuana dispensaries in our town. I'm sad to say I've heard some incredibly uninformed and backward thinking about cannabis here in Wall Lake. Some of it so ridiculous it reminds me of Reefer Madness. But this is not 1930. The race baiting and fear mongering that I've heard and read in online discussions insults the intelligence of every person in Wall Lake. I pray that all the nonsense and bigotry falls on deaf ears, but just in case it doesn't, I'd like to set the record straight about medical marijuana and how it affects the people in the cities where it's allowed to thrive. We can't afford to let lies and ignorance rule the day. In February, my husband and I will celebrate our 35th wedding anniversary, but my husband would not be here to celebrate if it weren't for the availability of medical marijuana and Rick Simpson Oil, a derivative of marijuana that's known for successfully treating everything from epilepsy to Parkinson's disease. Several years ago, Jimmy, my husband, a Vietnam veteran, local chef, was diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. The doctors proceeded to give us the death lecture. The prognosis was way too bleak for me to accept. I researched alternatives to what they just told us. That was more than five years ago. Not only is my husband still alive and healthy, not blind, not missing any limbs, he no longer requires insulin injections of any kind. This is largely due to marijuana. He was able, okay, he was able to take a pearl-sized drop of Rick Simpson Oil every morning with his coffee, and we soon began to understand why scientists and doctors have called Rick Simpson Oil "The Fountain of Youth." Within six months, we were able to step the insulin down, he was completely free of any signs of diabetes. Unfortunately, he's still old, but he's just no longer sick. He now has normal blood sugar, no insulin of any kind, and he's 76 years old. The miracle medicine that turned my husband's health around is only available at medical marijuana dispensaries. When dispensaries in this area closed down, it created quite a hardship for my husband and I and forced us to spend money in other counties that we would have spent locally for our medicine. Both of us are senior citizens with mobility issues and long trips aren't easy on us. We and many other senior citizens in the area need access to safe, legal cannabis, which is our medicine. I appreciate Wall Lake finally allowing the opening of a dispensary here, but I hope and pray that you will not overburden this new industry with too much regulation. To do so would make it too expensive for them to operate, sending hundreds of medical marijuana patients, all adults over 21, out of town or into the unregulated black market to get their medicine like the old days. Nobody wants that. Wall Lake has many other businesses that sell substances much more harmful than marijuana. The city of Wall Lake did not attempt to stop or overregulate all the places that sell coffee and caffeine products, alcohol, cigarettes. All of those are responsible for thousands of deaths every year. Now, does anyone know how many deaths the smoking, ingesting, or applying cannabis products have caused? Not one. Not even the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, admits that there has never been a single overdose death from the use of marijuana. The enforcement of arcane marijuana prohibition laws, however, have destroyed hundreds and hundreds of lives and must be stopped. We can do better here in Michigan and in Wall Lake. Marijuana was legalized through a majority of the electorate, and yet a year or more later, we're still trying to stifle its development. It doesn't make sense. Not only does the legal sale of marijuana generate millions in tax revenue for the city that allows them to locate there, it raises property values for everyone who lives there. That's right, marijuana coming to town does not lower property values than many fear mongers have suggested. Studies show it does just the opposite. Research from the Cato Institute found that single-family homes within one-tenth of a mile of a cannabis retailer increased eight and a half to 10 percent in value compared to homes located slightly further away from the dispensary. In Colorado, the home values in some cities that had at least one dispensary increased at nearly double the average rate than they did nationally. In Sheridan, Colorado, a community roughly 10 miles south of Denver, home values have increased over 90 percent since January 2014 and January 2019. And one more thing, you'll be happy to know that the new research shows that crime rates dropped substantially, substantially, in areas with marijuana dispensaries. The study just published this month in the Journal of Regional Science and Urban Economics analyzed crime data from Denver between 2013 and December 2016. Colorado, which legalized marijuana nearly two decades ago, kicked off sales of recreational pot in 2014. The results show that an additional dispensary in a neighborhood leads to a reduction of 17 crimes per month per 10,000 residents, which corresponds to roughly a 19 percent decline relative to the average crime rate over the same sample period. That's in the study. This may be in part due to the fact that the marijuana legalization frees up hundreds of police man-hours to investigate and solve more serious crimes in the area rather than having to chase after nonviolent and now-legal marijuana growers and sellers. Please don't allow old racial tropes and Vietnam-era fears to close your mind to the potential of marijuana-based products and the success of the businesses that sell them. Wall Lake deserves better. Let's let them be here.
Thank you. Okay, the next person, yes. Diane?
Thank you. You're never what you promised me, Bob.
Well, yeah, but not from here.
I just wanted to make a statement that I won't be giving my name and address because I'm in fear of someone that's in the audience, and I will take up my issue with Chelsea tomorrow at City Hall.
Can you pull the mic closer to you so I can hear you?
I think you heard me. Did you hear me?
I only heard parts of it.
Because I, you know what, I'm hard of hearing, too.
If you pull the mic closer to you, is all I ask you to do. I heard parts of what you said.
All right. There's someone in the audience I don't care to have my name and address, so I will take up the issue I'm concerned about.
I would like your name and address written down.
No, I won't do it. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next, please? Mr. Novak.
Wolfson.
Wolfson, I'm sorry, I called you Novak. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Right board, wrong person.
My name is Neil Wolfson. I live at 565 Windwood Court. Want to talk a little bit about this petition that's been sent to the state about putting for a stateful review for Take Back Wall Lake Ballot Questionnaire Committee to amend the city charter to cap the job of city manager with a retroactive 10-year term limit. I'd like to just address this. It's my understanding the current city manager, Dennis Witt, was hired in 2010 and is currently two years into a five-year contract which expires 2023. If this amendment is approved, it appears the city would be liable for an estimated $500,000 in severance and other payments, not to mention additional costs in finding and hiring a new city manager. Appears the reason for this petition is to have the city manager removed because of unsatisfactory performance or nefarious actions on his part and what appeared to be personal vendettas from various individuals. Based on the city council minutes of January 15, 2019, Councilmember Gabe Costanzo made a motion declaring city manager Dennis Witt annual review man performance evaluation for the prior year to be satisfactory. The city council unanimously approved the motion. Mr. Witt was hired in 2010 on a trial period to determine if he could do what he said he could do, to get the city out of the financial mess it was in. After a few years, he was able to show that he could deliver. The city council then negotiated a multi-year contract with Mr. Witt, and he is now two years into a new five-year contract. All one has to determine if Mr. Witt has performed as he said he is, is to review the past 10 years of the audited financial statements and statements made by the auditors. In addition, if he didn't perform as stated, the city council would not have given him another contract. If this amendment is approved, it could not only hamstring the city council from keeping any potential future city manager, but making finding a replacement with the expertise that is needed very difficult. In this day and age, you need people with a good education and the expertise in order to perform the jobs that the city council and the city administration has to do. It is my opinion this amendment is not in the best interest of the city of Wall Lake or its citizens. I would implore them to not vote in favor of it. Since Mr. Witt came on board along with the current mayor, and most of the current city council have been doing their job, working together, and what I mean by that, there's a few people on the board who were here, I mean, on the city council, who hired Mr. Witt, who brought him in after they looked at about 60 different applications. So working together, they were able to keep the city from going into bankruptcy or having the governor appoint an emergency manager. I believe this city manager, this mayor, and city council already have taken Wall Lake back from the brink of disaster. Not only have they done this, they have also been looking forward by promoting from within. They retain personnel with experience while working for Wall Lake. The current police and fire chief have worked their way up from the ranks and were promoted to their current positions by Mr. Witt with approval of city council. The chiefs have been doing an exemplary job, and under their leadership, their departments have improved and been outstanding in their performance. Mr. Witt has also implemented various department heads to hold multiple positions, allowing for cost savings. He has also worked with the city clerk, assistant city manager, and others to advance their education to be a greater asset to the city and mentors them for future advancement. This experience is invaluable for the future of this city. To finalize, I could go into a lot of different things that went over the 10 years, but that would take up a lot of time. To finalize, this city manager, mayor, city council, police and fire chiefs, police and fire personnel, city clerk, assistant city manager, director of finance and budget, DPW personnel, and other city personnel have taken back Wall Lake. They have put Wall Lake on a sound financial footing. There's still work to be done. Let these people continue to do what is good for Wall Lake. How about working together with your city manager, with your council, with your mayor? We can solve a lot of problems if we work together. Don't cut off your noses, spite your face. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Yes.
I'm not going to state my address as Ms. Ambrose and the news and everybody are here. I'll write it down on the.
Are you going to write it down?
Yep, I'll write it down, but I really don't want it publicly, you know, put on Channel 2. Mr. Witt.
Can you give us a first name or something?
Tina, I'm sorry, Tina Thurston. I'm sure it's a Lee found, but I'm not going to just provide it. Mr. Witt, I saw you in my neighborhood the other day when the road was flooded. Do we have any update for Tri-A? Any update about millage? You drove through the other day when the roads were completely covered.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Pause my time, please.
I'll answer a question. That's not what we normally do, but she's right.
This is the fourth time we've been here to ask if we have an update.
I have to get permission from the mayor. She's the boss.
I know, but I'm saying this is like the fourth or fifth month, and it's been a year since we talked about a millage.
He's trying to.
I know. I was explaining why I was asking.
You're right. I'm in the neighborhood every day since it began, every day, Saturday, Sunday. I think I saw you on a Sunday. Maybe it was a Saturday. I went there because of the flooding. The flooding was over the street. Further down, it was even worse from your place. You live, I know where you live.
Yeah, I see.
The flooding is because it's a low area, and it was a deluge. It did do damage to what we had already fixed in terms of the fixing, so the flooding is a different issue. We immediately moved to getting funding to fix the flooding and fix the roads. We've not there yet, but your question, I think, was about the project that we just, we're nearly completed in terms of the underground work. We are not nearly completed on top of the ground. We're going to have to bring the contractors back in. The flooding did wash away some of the fresh topsoil because it hadn't had time to grow and lock it in, so we're going to be doing improvements there. What I did notice, and maybe you will agree, maybe you won't, that the water, for the first time, is flowing in a way.
It is flowing. It is flowing.
And that was the major improvement to that area. That's what we predicted. That's what our engineer predicted, that if we're downstream, we start in Area H, and we work all the way to your area, that getting the water to flow is the important part. We can't fix your level. You know, you have, you in particular, where you're at is one of the lowest areas in that area, in there. I think the house down the street is even lower than yours.
Yeah, I sit up high, I'm lucky.
But it's a very low area. Everybody knows that. I've been in, with the council members that have ridden with me on Saturday and Sunday, Councilmember Ambrose has been there, Councilmember Osnick, we've all been there. The pond, in fact, I got a call from one of the council members who said there was a lake out front, and that was the council member, and I went over there, and it was flooded. It was all the way across that road, which is, again.
Normally, we don't get it at Omega and.
But the key is, is that the flow, the water was moving, and I've been here for 10 years almost, and the water never moved like that before. We couldn't see it if it was after we got it fixed, but this allowed us to see that it's actually working. You're going to see, or you did see, a big improvement in terms of the water draining. Those areas, at least over by the councilman's house, drained off very rapidly. I was pretty surprised about that. We still have an issue, we still have an issue with how low it is. That's going to take more federal funding, it's going to take expertise to get grants that are available to fix yours. You have a unique situation over there. The neighbors are probably going to be concerned about the project got washed away. We are not going to abandon that. The contractors will be back in to remedy the.
Yeah, it was posted on our Facebook page that one of the people got in.
We will be back in, and before that, we will, the city manager's office, myself, and the coordinator, who's my city manager, the engineer, we will have a meeting with that group, anybody in the Tri-A sub, the meeting, and we will do what we can do to remedy it, to make it that much better. That's where we are on it. I don't know as of today whether they fixed any of the washed away stuff.
No.
Probably not. We will have meetings tomorrow with engineering people and the contractors. I believe that's all scheduled.
On site tomorrow.
And so that's where we are on it. We're not, even when the contractor's gone, they're doing the underground stuff, but we're not going to abandon you. We are going to fix, we're going to find a solution to the, to the lower ground and the roads.
Okay.
There is no solution, there is no solution to the bugs. We've not gone to the council and asked for tax increases because we don't have a plan to fund. It's foolish to try to say we can raise the millage until we have a plan of what it's going to cost. We're still working on that, but your fire hydrants should be working, you're safe. In today's media, if you check that media, you saw where there was a, they, no fire hydrants wasn't working. Jim, did you get the copy of that?
I did, yes.
What was the city that was in?
That was in Detroit.
The issue was, they didn't even know their fire hydrants didn't work. I took the hit because I went public and told you out loud, your fire hydrants are not working. They're working now. So we dealt with public safety issue first, we're doing the flooding second, the roads are coming.
Okay, well, I just know when we talked a year ago, it was, you know, we're probably going to have to do a millage because there's many other neighborhoods that need it to be done, and it's been a year, and we hadn't heard anything yet.
It's the biggest project facing Wall Lake. Yours is the biggest problem, but every city, even the high-end, the higher-ground people, because of the weather, they all need, no matter where you go, they need improvements. Decker is the gateway to our city, and it needs improvement. We believe we got a solution there, a little time. Your solution's tougher, but we got your public safety issue solved. Now we got to get your, the flooding thing is better. It's not good because you're low ground, but your roads, we will get fixed, too.
Yeah, I do have nine stitches from my head from slipping in the road where all the gravel and potholes were and slammed into the garbage can a couple weeks ago. Part of it was my fault.
I didn't assign fault, I didn't.
No, 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 part of it was my fault because I was trying not to touch a garbage can, so I pulled it with my shirt, went to spin it around, slipped on the gravel, stepped on the thing, and smashed my head, and.
I heard about it.
Luckily, I have wonderful neighbors and.
I'm very proud of my people, they took care of me.
Wonderful EMTs, so I am very glad that I voted yes for the bond, or the millage again.
That's what I'll draw for you, Mr. Thurston.
We appreciate it, so I'll report back to Tri-A.
I appreciate you acknowledging that I was there. That was a Sunday or a Saturday, don't remember which.
Yeah, no, I've seen you a couple times.
I'm there every day.
I'm usually hiding behind my car because I was in my pajamas at the time, and my special needs kiddo wanted to go outside, and that was it. He was going.
That's part of my 10 hours a week that I put in.
My other thing, and I know I'm not supposed to address the audience, so I'm not going to turn around and address them. The news are here. We are an embarrassment. This entire city, I've read your wife's comments, I've seen people taking our candidates' names and buying their domains, if I'm using the correct terminology. We've got people leaking reports who are supposed to be sealed, damaging a man's life when, according to the report, it was invalid. I knew this election would be nasty because three of you are up, and with Mr. Costanzo, and if we get three more in, it's going to take the majority. I knew this was going to be nasty, but this is sickening. This is absolutely sickening, and it's embarrassing.
I agree.
I have been, I have admitted that I'm not happy with a lot of what you guys have done, and I've also admitted that I know I'm not going to be happy with everything you've done, but I don't think you're holding the best interest. And now if we could just have a fair fight, a fair fight, if you want to, if you want to attack Ms. Potter on something that's fair. I was told by a mutual kind of acquaintance who's a firefighter's wife that she's telling everyone to vote no on the millage. She told me to vote yes. She said, we don't want to lose our police and fire, but yet it's out there that she's saying no. Just stop, all of you, just stop. It's sick. We're a city, we're supposed to get along, and we, stop it.
Address the council, please. Okay, who's that? The lady in the black top. You want to come up, please?
Oh, my God.
I expose them when you can, right?
That's right. That's right.
Why'd you stay down?
You know where we live. It's hurting harassment.
It's slowing down.
Yes.
Shorty.
This doesn't go 30 minutes.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Callie Aegis. I live at 1600 Lookout. All right. I live in a war zone every day. There is a war on women. Gloria Allred, 2018. We must be strong and we must be fearless when confronting the dangers in our local communities. As most of you know, I've been involved in an ongoing investigation regarding an alleged homegrown sexual predator and his enabling mother since early July. I and other alleged victims of the Makowski family have been treated with respect from the Wall Lake Police Department and City Council. We've been listened to and taken seriously in a world that is systemically designed to work against us, but most importantly, they believe us. The owner of the studio, Dory Makowski, admitted that her son Tyler had a dangerous problem in an email shortly after the notorious Facebook thread went viral. It was wise and unprecedented of the city manager and city council to completely cut ties with dance dynamics pending the ongoing and current criminal investigations. I and thousands of alleged victims and their supporters nationwide commend you for taking our allegations and our safety so seriously. I would also like to show gratitude to our local community for their continued support in our efforts. We will be having our third Stand in Solidarity event this next Saturday, September 28th, on the public property in front of the fire station from 12 to 4:00. Victims and their supporters will be gathering to spread continued awareness and information for victims everywhere. We will wear teal ribbons to promote awareness against the insidious nature of sexual harassment, assault, rape, and body shaming, and I invite anyone to attend who feels awareness against sexual misconduct is vitally important to the safety of our community. Yes, this used to be just about a single local family and their businesses, but through shared trauma, we've created a community of supporters who span much further than the alleged victims of the Makowski family. We've created a platform. We, as members of the shared communities, have a duty to shine a bright light of truth upon dangerous people. I'm proud to live in a place where knowledge is power and our safety is valued. I will continue to encourage an environment where sexual predators and bigots are publicly outed, especially when they are local business owners or in a potential. I will continue to encourage an environment where sexual predators and bigots are publicly outed, especially when they are local business owners or in a potential position of power like city council candidates, Rick Greenwell and Jeff Rondo. We can't win the war through surrender. We must keep up the fight. Thank you, Wald Lake, for doing better and being on the right side of history. Thank you.
Okay. In the back row, please.
Hi, I'm Darlene Siampa. I prefer not to give my address. I'm gonna write it down, though. And I would like to echo Tina's plea for a fair and impartial and attack-free election, where people aren't attacked, they're not accused of being a racist or a bigot, they haven't been convicted in a court of law, but they've been convicted in the court of public opinion. There's due process that's allowed with every legal proceeding, except in Wald Lake. There are city council persons who have been removed that were told at their hearing that they gave up their constitutional rights when they became a city council member. And that's absolutely shameful. And the way the candidates are being treated is not only shameful, it's illegal, and it should be brought to the media's attention. And I'm personally glad the media's here, because I want to bring attention. I want to rip the scab off and show everybody what this city is really all about, because the candidates are gonna bring us to where we should be, not where we are right now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, here in the front hall. Mr. Anderson.
I couldn't see your face.
Yeah. Hello. Jerry Anderson, 127 South Pontiac Trail. On a little lighter note, I'd like to bring some information, maybe a couple of observations. I belong to Waha, the Lakes Area Homeowners Association, and last Tuesday at the Lake Board meeting, they voted unanimously to extend the invasive weed control on our lake. And to me, that's just a wonderful thing. It's been a, I think we've been working on the lake for, this will be the five years, five years, and then this is the next extension. I want to thank Councilmember Ambrose for being on the board. And we get an opportunity, it's not easy when you got Novi and Wald Lake trying to cooperate on a, on an issue, but yet, it works. It works very well. What we're gonna do is another five years, continue to work invasive weeds are, they, you can't, it's almost like your yard or your house. Maintenance is required, and it's been recognized, and they've done a very good job. You can tell by the interest. Mercer Beach is probably our most-used public property, especially during the summer months. People are coming to Wald Lake, not maybe as a destination, but we're more than a pass-through town. With the quality of the lake improving every year, you see some remodeling, a couple of new houses. It seems like the energy is there. A couple of things, just don't wanna, Wald Lake also has identified storm drains that go into the lake and trying to figure out. We have pipes that aren't even on maps. They've been identified. Maybe try and understand what's running into the lake and try and stop it. One thing I do appreciate, the city trying to do is, in the upper subs, not use fertilizer that, in the watershed that washes into the lake, that creates algae blooms and more weeds. It's a big, big problem. Another problem is the overpopulation of geese. We fund a program to, in the spring, round up goose nests and eggs to try and reduce the population. This year, we're working with the people at Shawwood Lake, which is that little lake down at the end that's tied to Wald Lake, and that's a haven for geese. So, hopefully, spring of 2020, we're able to do that area, too, and try and help reduce the goose population because the E. coli and the droppings, everyone understands the problems that gee spring. Couple other, one other thing, again, is the weeds in the lake move from lake to lake, they believe, because people do not wash off their boats and trailers. Oakland County is buying two power wash units that will be available to local cities like us, that maybe we could use the DPW. And spring and fall, when there's a fishing tournament where boats are coming from other lakes to our lake, they could bring it up here, wash the boats off, and maybe help ensure that we're not spreading other weeds into our lake. We've already got a new one called Stony Starwort, and there's other things that are coming. So, we're somewhat naive to believe that there's something in one lake that we won't get it. Eventually, you do like zebra mussels and things like that. But with some of these efforts, I really believe it'll be very helpful. Goose. I guess the other thing would be is that the passing of the police millage by such a large margin, I think, kinda shows the residents have some faith in what we're doing. The school millage passing, you gotta have quality schools to attract people that want to live here. My kids and now my grandkids have used Wald Lake schools. Fairing degree of success. No. But that being said, the rails are trails opening up. Again, studies say that they actually enhance property value with people that are near the trails. Hopefully, it sparks some investment. Now, you can go from, gosh, the east side all the way down towards Ann Arbor, and I think this is just wonderful. So, that being said, it feels like there's some new energy between the beach party, fireworks, a few things going on. Hopefully, we can continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else?
Yes.
There we go. There you go.
Thank you.
I got a question for you, and I want this on record. You can either sit there and make a motion to answer this question, or you can give me authority, mayor.
What was that?
Make a motion. Have someone make a motion, someone second it to allow me to ask a question, or you can sit there and give me permission.
You can ask a question.
Okay. Does the city council and city recognize my jurisdiction? And I want that by vote.
I guess it-
I want it on the record.
I don't understand your question.
I want it on the record. I want to know if you understand my jurisdiction.
Your jurisdiction regarding what, sir?
I don't ask your question. Answer mine. Do you recognize my jurisdiction?
If I understood what your question was, I'd answer you.
Thank you. You just made my day.
Okay. I guess he had something on the podium? Was it a microphone?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what he was doing. Not him, the gentleman that left. Okay, I think the lady in the front in the red had her hand up.
My name is Marlene, and I've been a taxpayer of your salary since 89. I will not give-
Please put your name and address on the piece of paper.
According to the Open Meetings Handbook Act on page 13, I am not required to give my address. I live on Neptune.
Audience participation of the city of Wald Lake, I'm asking you to put your name and your address on there as soon as audience participation is over with. The treasurer will pick that up, or the finance director will pick that list up and hand it to the city clerk. I am asking you, before you speak, to put your name and your address down.
I am not going to do that because according to the handbook of the Open Meetings Act-
According to the rules of our council policy. Mr. Attorney?
Where could I reference that rule?
Mr. Attorney?
It's the longstanding rule and policy of the Wald Lake City Council dating back decades, that people who want to address the council during the public comment section of the meeting, state their name and provide their address.
So, if you want to speak, please put your name and address on the paper.
According to the handbook.
If you don't want to put your name and address on the paper, I'm sorry.
Where can I reference, where can I reference that rule? Is it a verbal rule, or is it a written rule?
It's a written policy of the city council.
Where can I reference that?
You can get it from the city clerk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to get up and speak? Saundra, are you blocked in?
No.
Okay. If we're done with audience participation-
Go down low.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see a hand. Okay. In the middle. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I said to anybody, and I didn't see a hand. I'm sorry. I couldn't even see your face from here.
Sorry. My name is Randy Champ. I live at 1275 Leon Road. My family's been in the city for nearly 100 years. There's a lot of things going on. I'm gonna take a half step back to a couple of things that just recently passed. Unlikely a change at this point, but I'd like to know how I can get a copy of whatever agreement the city made with Schaefer Development, if I can simply request that, or if I need to do a for-you request, so I know what they may or may not be complying with, including the 20 to 25-foot buffer that they told us they were gonna do, that they did not leave adjacent to my property. In fact, there's silt fences on my property that I pointed out to Dan or Dennis or somebody with the city that was there the day after. This is still stressful. And past that, who do I ask and tell or request? That one of the casualties, casualties of the development was a large buck, which is now dead and decaying about 30 feet from my property line, and the stench is so bad that I can't even walk outside. So, who takes care of that? Do you call the development company? Do I call the health department, the police, the fire, DNR? Who's gonna get rid of this thing? There are people out there working today, and they just ignored it. The stench is so bad, I had to cancel the barbecue. It's just gut-wrenching. Besides not seeing what's supposed to be there, I see what is there. So, there's a, there's a dead buck 30 feet from my property line next door that probably got hit with one of the fallen trees or something. I don't know. But if somebody could either take care of that or tell me who else to call. And then, how do I get a copy of whatever agreement the city made with Schaefer Development so that it might be a little apparent or more apparent of what they are and are not complying with?
We can provide him a copy. I mean, you can come in tomorrow, not to FOIA. You ask now. I'm telling you, have him a copy ready in the morning. You can come in, or whenever you can.
All right. Because we all sat here when they said they'd give us a 20, 25-foot buffer, and that didn't happen.
That part I don't know about, but I can get you that copy. If you want to leave an email, we can have it actually send a PDF copy over to you.
Sure.
Electronic, even better.
And as far as the buck grows on the property, I think you're surmising that it was killed by something on the property. Who knows how it died?
Yeah, who knows? It's just that hasn't happened in the last-
I would assume that possibly a call to the developer may-
We'll send-
We'll work something out to get it cleaned.
Please, it's, it's gut-wrenching.
We'll take care of that.
I'm sure this warm weather is not helping it any.
Dig a hole.
They can, if they've got a piece of equipment, they can-
Yeah, we'll have the equipment out there.
But again, we're surmising how it died. It may just be an old buck. I don't know.
Or get hit on the road and then walk in.
All the animals are fine over there.
All right. I'm sorry, did you ask me to come in and estimate tomorrow, or I left my email?
No, we can PDF it to you if you're good with that. You know, that'll, that'll happen as soon as you leave the email. We may even have it. Do we have it?
Thank you.
I'm having cats. Ooh, yes. Foxes.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Now, are there any more hands? Okay, very back corner.
My name is Jay. I'm not gonna state my address, but I'll leave it for you. I'm a little new to the politics here, so I'm just curious as to, who is your boss?
Who is my boss?
Yes, ma'am.
I am the highest elected official in the city of Wald Lake.
In the city? How about on a state level? Who do you answer to there?
Attorney General.
Say the Attorney General.
Okay.
That would be mine.
Thank you very much.
I can't hear what you're saying. Please, a little bit of respect. You have a question?
Yeah, can I reference something from what Randy said?
What did he ask?
He asked if he could reference.
Sure.
Okay, after he's through with his additional talk, then I want to say something, too.
If you give your name and address, you most certainly can. We need, we need a formal vote if he's gonna speak a second time. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there support? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Athlee?
Yes.
Okay, now, go ahead and-
Name's Neil Wolfson again, 565 Windward Court. I met Randy a couple of months ago at Lowe's parking lot.
Okay, please, please, please address the board.
Yeah. I met Randy a couple of months ago at Lowe's parking lot. We talked a little bit about the Beechwood condos going up and stuff like that. Randy's not an unreasonable person. He's a good guy. We had a nice discussion, and I was trying to impress also the council. You're good people, not unreasonable people. The city clerks, the police, the fire chief, finance director, I've talked to a number of you. Very reasonable, answered questions without any problem. All Randy has to do is come in to the city hall, talk to either the police or the city clerk or whatnot, and I'm sure it would be over to the city manager, and it'll be taken care of. That's what I found, that they get things done. Some things they can't handle, but a lot of it they can. They will talk to you. They will work with you, if you're willing to work with them, too. That's all.
And you are correct. The city staff handles the day-to-day operations, and if someone needs something, they contact them. If they're denied, then by all means, they come to council if there's legitimate reason. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Once? Twice? Gone. Will you please pick up the list of names and addresses and either hang on to them till the meeting's over, or however you want to handle it? They're in your hands. We've had them disappear, so let's don't have them disappear again. Okay. Council report. Is there any council member who would like to make a report this evening?
Yes, sir. We got a couple of reports. First, the DDA met last Tuesday. At that time, it was requested that, or there was discussion about the businesses supporting a T-shirt for the people that were participating, the inaugural ride for the Rails to Trails, which is starting on Lake Michigan, which is going all the way through our community and numerous other communities to Lake Huron. At that time, it was suggested that the DDA could possibly pay for it as opposed to the individual businesses. So, the DDA did participate in the purchase of approximately 60 shirts for the participants for the participants that were in the Rails to Trails, so it's a nice shirt, it's got the inaugural ride, 2019 on the back, it has the DDA logo. They came through Walt Lake today, they had the ceremony over here at Gunn and Mattel Park in Wixom and they're moving on, they got a couple more day ride, but they will end up in Lake Huron, probably Port Huron, I believe. So that was all good, they were very appreciative, they extended their thanks to the city of Walt Lake and the DDA for that. Also too, I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson for bringing to the attention in regards to the quality of our lakes since the lake board had been created. You can go on to Novi's website under lake board and you can see the actual diagrams as far as the amount of weeds that we had in the lake to where we are today and the control that has been implemented and the amount of weeds that have been removed as far as these invasive species, which is an ongoing problem throughout the state because of boats being transported from one lake to another. So those particular wash basins that Oakland County purchased hopefully will benefit us in probably stopping a lot of that crossing over from lake to lake of the invasion species when we have the activities on the lakes, so. Those are your two reports.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Last weekend, I wanted to report that I attended the Wixom block party with the Michigan Airline Trailway. The group is spending a lot of time educating the public around the new road crossing signals, they are quite different than what we're used to seeing, so I would encourage everybody to check out the Michigan Airline Trailway website, they have a nice educational piece on there. One light is called a Hawk Light, the other is the RRFB light. One stops traffic, one does not stop traffic, so it is a little bit different light than we're used to seeing around the area and I would encourage everybody to learn what these lights are, they're gonna start installing them next week and it's a very different type of light, so I would encourage everybody to look at it. The trailway represented the municipalities very well and the Friends of the Michigan Airline Trail, so they did a really nice job with the block party.
Let me, I need to add one more thing.
Yes.
The final asphalt paving of the Rails to Trails, the section that's missing between M5 and Hagerty Road will be going down today and then they're going to go through and put an additional two inch cap on the whole length of the trail. But we need to make everybody aware that in order to put this down, they put down an adhesive, a tar adhesive, so when they tell you the trail's closed, unless you want this black muckety stuff all over your tires and your body, stay off the trail. But that should be completed within the next three to five days based on weather, so. That's it.
The actual total system, I think Kristen told me today, would be sometime towards mid-October.
Yes.
Before the lights are actually functioning and working.
Right, right, the lights, the ballers and the whole thing is...
So until that time, the trail is technically not officially open. I guess it's right at your own risk, the trail is still closed.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to mention one thing, there has been some reports from the trailway, that there has been acts of vandalism, they've asked us to step up patrols with the signs being thrown off the side of the road, the barricades, from a public safety standpoint, they're asking each community to look for the acts of vandalism along the trailway in their towns.
Okay, is there anybody else with any council reports? Okay, city manager.
Madam Mayor, council, I would request a motion to receive and file the departmental...
I need your microphone.
If you didn't hear me the first time?
No.
I would request that the mayor and the city council move to receive and file the departmental and divisional statistical reports.
I'll make that motion. And do I have...
Support.
Okay, I have a motion, I have support. Any comments this evening on the reports? Roll call, please.
Block?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Athlee?
Yes.
Athlee.
Couple more things, I actually gave in my response to one of the speakers, I gave you the update and I think the people were here on where we are on the tri-a and what we believe is improvement on the flow, which is gonna be a big improvement for the people who've had standing water for years in tri-a. As I said earlier, we've not fixed the problem in terms of the road covering and flooding, but it's draining quicker, substantially quicker, and that was obvious to anybody there, so I think my remarks to her was covers that report. We will not be leaving that tri-a subdivision until we've satisfied the homeowners, we will be offering an administrative meeting with anybody who wants to meet to deal with what's not correct or what they feel is not correct. Even when the contractor leaves, we will still be meeting with them, we believe that it's possible the contractors broke up some sidewalks or driveways by the heavy equipment that went through and so we're finding cracks and stuff like that, which you didn't get when, the first time we did the survey, when they have to take up a sidewalk or a driveway, we identified that, but then during the work process, they may well have cracked a few sidewalks. We're not gonna have a big argument about who cracked them, we're gonna fix what we can, we're gonna leave them with better yards. I think, my feedback is that the residents are actually surprised that we did less damage or the contractors did less damage to the surrounding area in terms of digging it up. We did have holes and stuff like that, but most folks over there are pretty pleased that they got fire safety, they were surprised that those things hadn't worked for so many years and they were literally led to believe they did. So we've got that part fixed, we believe we can make most people happy, can't make everybody happy, we had bad experiences with some of the workers there. The contractors, they were using water hoses without asking residents, that's the, you know, the very first thing they should have done is get permission. They encroached and we believe the residents are, you know, they have a sound argument, so we dealt with that all along. But before we close out that project and declare any kind of a completion of the contractor's work, we will do final walkthrough to get people satisfied to the extent we can, and that means additional repairs and making their lawns look like they did either as good as they were or better before we leave. But you can see the difference now in terms of the lawns have already started to green up and green in and so there's some improvement. The rain, and that leads into the second report, the rain was really a deluge, it, I mean, I got calls from everybody over there because I've been traveling, so I've identified a few people there that do talk. It was a mess, but it was a substantial amount of rain in a very short period of time, I don't know if anybody can help me on how many inches, but it was very heavy rain in a very short period of time, and so we dealt with that at tri-a. The same rain, it had problems on the beach, you had a lot of water coming off of the higher end up by the churches and it virtually washed out our beach and that hit a lot of people by surprise who were maybe paying attention. It's no surprise if you've been here 10 years and you paid attention to the beach, it happens quite regularly. This rain was pretty bad, so I went down there, I think that was a Sunday, and got called and took pictures of that, but the ruts were coming off and some people described the damage done by the water, described it to the new house, the very large house, but there's no indication the house had anything to do with it, the substantial damage done by the water flow and causing the ruts was on the other side, may be coming off liberty. I did meet with it, we took the pictures necessary to start planning in the future a way to redirect the water flow if possible, if we can get another grant, but we fixed that literally Monday, they had it done by noon, up and running again. So the rain causes a lot of damage that we've had in the past, tri-a was particularly hit hard because we had been working on it, so the stuff got washed out, and I think we can satisfy all those residents and homeowners who were damaged by the rain. So that's where we are on that. Another report I'd like to give to the council is the committee that the mayor established on the memorial project, the memorial committee, we met and we elected a chairman and I think he's still in the audience and I would defer to him if he could give an update on, under my report, but give an update on where the committee went in terms of what we're proposing and what they think we can do with developing the public safety campus next door with the multipurpose facilities that we envision and how it deals with the trail and it's an imitation to the trail and it's a trailhead substitute because the trailhead's going away down there, there's not gonna be anything left down by Pontiac pretty soon except sidewalks and gates and... Neil Wolfson?
You wanna come up with permission? Give us a report?
You give me an update on the, or you want me to do it, an update on the memorial committee's decisions or talk about it or we're putting you on the hook? You wanna do it? That's the third time he's got to talk tonight.
Yeah, this time we don't have to vote to let you talk.
Okay, Neil Wolfson.
Just pull the mic down a little bit.
Okay, is that a little better? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had a nice meeting a quarter week ago, two chiefs, city manager, John and myself, and it went very well. Casey, no, Casey wasn't there. Chief brought in a couple of pictures about some various types of memorials for fire chief, for fire, for police, for veterans. We discussed about the usages that we can put this plot of land through and we did find out one thing that pretty much we can use all these funds from the...
For forfeiture.
Yeah, forfeiture funds for that, so there'll be very little cost, if anything, to the city. We came up some ideas about maybe having concerts there, we're gonna have the farmers' market, or maybe have police and fire training, we're gonna have these storage compartments set up for fire training, we're gonna have a covering where you can have picnics under there, or you can have the farmers' market under there. These are ideas that we've been kicking around. Oh yeah, Stephen Bell with the DDA was also there, and we came up some good ideas, we're kicking it around and there's still a lot to do, we had the, I think you might have seen the preliminary plans, and it was just a sketch that was done years ago about possible uses for it. It's been contaminated areas, it's been capped, and we feel we've got a, I think the city manager and the police chief went over to Boston Engineering to go over some of the stuff with them and we're gonna meet again soon and get some other ideas, if people have some ideas, contact the city clerk or contact, leave some notes and give us your thoughts. And I think this is something like we even thought about when we have parades, that can be a staging area. I mean, there's so many, it's a multi-purpose thing, I mean, this room here was done from these forfeiture funds. Police chief, now we've got locker rooms for the officers and for male and separate ones for females, came from forfeiture funds, so I think this is gonna help the city, there's a lot that can be done in that area, we came up with concerts ideas, just all kinds of things. I don't know if any of you watch Hallmark Channel, when you see the Hallmark Channel, there's always these little towns and it got all these festivals, Valentine's Festivals, Fall Festival, Summer Festival, Spring Festival, Winter Festival, we can do the same thing there. These are some of the things that we're kicking around for that. I think that pretty much covers it.
That pretty much does it.
Thank you.
So the question has to be, you know, what's it gonna cost or what we, we haven't got to the budget till we finalize at least a concept, what we got is ideas about what to use it for because it is underutilized and has been because nobody, there was no remediation, so we've capped it and we're able to put it to work for the kind of things we're doing. So as soon as we, we're probably having that discussion with the engineers tomorrow where we can do some more closely identifiable concept plans based on the history of what we've done. We did focus on how to fund the basis for it, the beginning of it, and that was through forfeiture fund as long as it's police and fire related, the police department has a big say on what goes there, but we also can design it in a way that it's trail friendly and it's an imitation to the trails, so it would be a nice asset if we can get that going. We can use it for police parking, which doubles as, you know, any kind of parking that's trail parking, so we can use that as a multipurpose facility with funding from our forfeiture program, and we've been doing that ever since I've been here. I created the concept after we identified the idea that we could take money from bad guys and gals, and we've been doing that for some time, and that's not a secret, I won't tell you too deep, but there's a substantial amount of money, but it can only be spent for things that are not normally budgeted. So you'll get an idea of what this is gonna cost when we get closer and you'll be voting on to spend it, but in terms of, you can't take that money to supplement your operational budget. This is outside debt, it clearly fits, the chief, police chief provided the rules and regulations to the committee to say this is why we can do what we can do, and so we believe that that's gonna be a big asset if we can get that going soon. So that, I got one more report, the...
Might mention one thing too, very important feature of that particular public safety campus is that there's gonna be a culvert style bridge...
Yes.
...that will allow you to access the trail and the people on the trail to access that area for everyone's use.
That actually was started in the very beginning, no matter how it develops as a training facility, the invitation was we put a culvert in there and we masquerade as a bridge, so if it's designed properly, we got a landscape architect that came up with that idea, so it'd be very inviting where you're coming down the trail and it's just a natural entrance. And of course, what we plan to do is design that facility, but it takes them to the front where the memorial that was created long before I got here, some of you were around when they did that, the memorial's out front, as part of that process, we'll be upgrading the one out front. It'll be one in the same project, so we designed it and we redo it, that's why we extended the apron, we combined that, the memorial out front, as we began to talk about keeping it there and doing that, we extended the apron so that we could have those kind of functions out front, but we coordinated that effort with redoing the fire hydrants. If you recall, the city council had established the policy of redoing the fire hydrants, five a year, if you go back a couple of years, and the one out front had to be relocated, so that's what took so long to get to where we were, but that was all part of coordinating and managing and get the best bang for our buck, so that's what happened, but it also ties into our new facility. If the city council's got four votes, we believe that we can convince you we got four votes, because it benefits everybody, not just the police, but the fire, but also the riders on the trail. Having said that, the trail, I've got to tell you, the trail council still exists, you didn't get out of the trail council, we're bound by contract, there was no money budgeted whatsoever to pay for what we rebuilt. Within my own authority as a budget amendment, I moved about $50,000 into the right place, so in your warrant, you'll see that we paid the trail, we met our obligation, I have no reason not to do that, so we paid for the trail, but that money came from other places in the operating budget that you did approve. The budget's not bigger, we didn't take it out of fund balance, it was moved from other places. One of those places is sidewalks, ADA sidewalks, so we moved that money, so we're gonna have to put the money back before we can fix the ADA, so what we did is we met our obligation because they were billing us and they wanted it.
They wanted their money.
They did.
We all received emails.
And that's what the city manager of Wixom's supposed to do, he was obligated, so we've got, the first check was 34,000, help me out, the next one was 11,000, that was unbudgeted money, that wasn't anticipated, and I'm not even sure that Wixom had their portion budgeted, and I don't have to guess, he probably is getting the vote tonight, but I've already paid it, I use my authority, I do have the authority to move money around in the budget, so I've moved that money, so when you get a complaint that certain things are not getting done with ADA, we gotta find a way to fund the ADA stuff and the sidewalks and all that, because that money was shifted over to pay for the trail because we owed it, and you didn't pull out, so we had to pay it, and so I took it upon myself to do that because we did owe it, that's the answer. I think that covers everything I need to say to you tonight.
Madam Mayor, I have two points of inquiry for the city manager, or just more about the tri-a, since you're gonna be having an onsite meeting tomorrow, I actually was contacted by a couple residents before the council meeting to ask about this. At the Salvation Army, the stop sign is missing, I don't know if it's from the construction or if it's from, it was missing prior, and there's a speed limit sign that they took out that comes in, like a 25 mile an hour sign, it's out of the ground and it's leaning in someone's tree, it's off of Sigma, I just wrote it down, he sent me a communication on it, so when you're in the neighborhood, you may wanna look where these two signs are at.
Yeah, we should get those reported like the day it happens, that we gotta put up, especially if it's a stop sign. especially if it's a stop sign or something down.
Yeah.
To put that up instantly rather than waiting for a council meeting. But yeah, we'll get on that tomorrow. Uh, I'm sure we got that in record.
He said he had contacted the city. That's why he contacted me, so I apologize.
He said he already did?
He did.
Well, it may already be fixed. I don't know. I mean, we, we, uh, what was it, yesterday, four o'clock in the afternoon, we had a tree go down? Was it yesterday?
Yep.
I lose track. Uh, down on the beach, you know, so we're, we're just going from one thing to the other. But no, the si- uh, the stop sign down, that's fixed immediately as we can get there. Uh, putting up a playground sign's a little less priority, but stop signs are immediate. So if he called in, they should've worked on it. They didn't, we'll check in the morning.
So my other point of inquiry is kind of relating to, uh, the Decker Road project. Do we have a date that it's slated to start next year, that paving from the county? Like, when do we anticipate the start, the paving, resurfacing of...
You mean to fix Decker Road?
Decker from 14.
I do not know the date. Uh, that's not that far out. It's not gonna be next year.
I thought it was 21 or 22.
Yeah, it's not next year. It's gonna be further out.
After the PUD.
Well, if your question is, are they gonna start doing it before the other project's done? We will not, I, I think that's probably everybody's, that will not happen. We, we believe that we got a, the solution from the DDA to help fund that whole area, make it right. But they will not do anything on Decker. We won't allow that until that project is completed. Uh, I guess we're calling it the Decker Project now. I, I, you know, it was on Leon to start with, but, uh, what's the official name of it?
Beachwood.
Is, is it Beachwood? Is, or they keep changing the name. But the, the new development is going to, there's gonna be heavy equipment in there. We're not gonna do anything to damage new roads. That's not gonna happen. So that's gonna be delayed. And when we get close to the end of that, then we're gonna sit with the county and try to, uh, to encourage them, sweeten the pot, to get that done sooner than 2021.
Well, there's also the Commerce Project too that has to contribute to the road, right?
Well, that's true. And I believe that's gonna be finished before anything's finished over on, over on...
But I'm saying they have to contribute for the...
A couple of bucks, yeah. That's not, it doesn't, it doesn't fix Decker Road for us, but they're, they're messing that road up pretty good. I mean, the road's in rough shape to begin with, but they're not helping it and neither will the construction. So Decker Road's gonna be a mess for a while. I apologize for that. But it's, it's the last stretch of road in our city that we haven't done. You know, we've done almost every major gateway and stuff since I've been here, but that one section, you know, if you go on the other side into Novi, they got their section done. They call it Novi Road. We call it Decker. But it's already done and even 12 Mile may be open down there.
It is open, I hear. 100% open.
Yeah, uh, I used to complain about that here at the council meeting, but they got it right. They, they sweetened the pot for the higher authorities and they got it done earlier. That's what we intend to do with the DDA's money.
Okay. So that's the end of your report?
I'm done, yes.
Any correspondence that's coming? Okay. Attorneys' report?
Uh, yes, I got, uh, two items to report on tonight. The first is the, uh, first reading of, um, the recreational adult-use marijuana ordinance that, uh, council had requested at the last meeting. Um, just to provide you some background, as you know, there is a, um, an initiatory ordinance that will be appearing on the November ballot, uh, that pertains to, um, recreational marijuana facilities. And if that ordinance, uh, passes, uh, with the voter approval, what that ordinance would require is that the city, uh, approve, uh, a minimum of eight recreational marijuana retail stores within the city of Wild Lake and then prohibit all the other different types of, of recreational marijuana facilities. Uh, so, uh, so what this ordinance does is it essentially is sort of a, uh, a backup type of ordinance, uh, that would go into effect in the event that the initiatory ordinance, uh, was, uh, was rejected by the voters in November. And what this ordinance does is it is, it essentially is a, um, maintains the status quo in the city of Wild Lake as it pertains to marijuana facilities. It keeps the total number of facilities the same that we currently have under the, under the medical regulations. It simply would allow for the approved medical facilities to, uh, to suit, to serve the dual purpose of also being a, a recreational adult-use facility as well. So what that means is that, uh, under our current ordinances, there's a total of, uh, three medical provisioning centers that are allowed citywide. Uh, those three, uh, medical provisioning centers would also be, uh, would, would be eligible, uh, for approval to sell marijuana recreationally under this ordinance. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't increase the number of, of marijuana facilities at all, uh, in the city above and beyond what we already have with, with the medical. Uh, it essentially keeps them the same, the same status quo. Um, uh, it would just allow the existing facilities or the ones that get approved medically to, uh, to also, uh, to also, um, serve as a recreational facility as well. Uh, there are, uh, there are differences between the, um, the Adult Use Recreational Act and the, uh, and the Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Uh, under the Recreational Use Act, there are some different types of facilities that are, um, that are provided for, that are not provided for under the Medical Use Act. Uh, for, for instance, a, um, a marijuana micro-business, which is a, the best way to describe it is, is it's sort of analogous to a microbrewery, um, to where they, they grow the, the product on, onsite in the facility and, in, in small batches and, and it's consumed, uh, at the location as well. Uh, this ordinance would not allow that. That's a totally different, new and different type of, of facility that we don't have. So this ordinance, as it's written, um, would not allow that type of facility. If this ordinance does go into effect, then farther down the road, then council can revisit the ordinance and make further decisions about whether or not you wanna make further adjustments or further changes to, uh, you know, to, to modify the, the types or numbers of facilities at that appropriate time. But it's, it's intended primarily to, um, uh, to have some regulatory mechanism in place in the event that the, uh, that the, uh, initiatory ordinance does not pass in November. So that's the, um, that's the, uh, first item that I had to report on. I don't, I don't know, do you want, if you wanna do, uh, entertain a motion at this point on that?
Well, before I ask you, uh, entertain a motion on the ordinance, I would like to make the suggestion that whoever makes the motion, insert someplace here in the ordinance, um, hours of operation. Uh, comments that I've had from people coming to the community, to the existing, uh, center that we have, is that the Sunday hours are very inconvenient in that it doesn't open until 2:00 in the afternoon. There's been no complaints on Sunday operation. There's been, I don't think there's been any complaints on the hours, period. But I would like to see that we just, we allow this to be a nine-to-nine operation Monday through Friday. But that's my request. I don't know who...
So no, no Saturday and Sunday?
Did I say Monday through Friday? How about Monday through Sunday? I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me.
Well, we could always, we could always do that on the second reading.
Well, I think if we do it now, shows our, I mean, we can do it on second reading, but I would like to see it inserted now and go forward. If there's any complaints on it, we can...
We'll have a motion in a second.
But that has been the request from the public using it. I'm not sure where's the best place to insert it, Van.
So that'd be, um...
Uh, well, it's simple enough. I could, uh, I could make the appropriate, um, revisions and then, uh, bring it back for, uh, second reading with the...
With it inserted?
With that in there.
Okay. That's probably better than adding it for the next time.
If that's council's desire.
Okay. With that request, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that.
Okay.
I have some points of discussion on this ordinance.
Okay.
Now that we're at that phase of it. So there's a couple of things on this ordinance that, that concern me on it. Um, you know, page 71 and section, section 18403, paragraph B. As the attorney just stated, you know, it requires to be at the same location as a medicinal license to include the recreational license. Um, you know, I have some concerns around, around this in itself. Um, this could be construed by some, we are designing this ordinance to benefit certain businesses existing in the city. Secondly, this could create an appearance of impropriety, in my opinion. Having one business controlling two licenses is in essence creating a small monopoly in the market. When you have a monopoly in the market, it will affect the pricing and supply of the ordinance itself.
You're aware it can only be sold at medical marijuana for the first two years. It can't be sold at a standalone operation.
The attorney did not cover that, so I apologize if I'm incorrect on that.
I think I'm correct. Am I not, Van?
Yeah.
He did not allude to that, the city attorney.
For the first two years, the, um, uh, the people that get approved at the state level, you know, understand that there's, there's two levels of regulation here. There, there's, there's local regulation and there's state regulation. Uh, the, this, under, in order to, to qualify under the state rules for a state license, you have to, you have to, um, qualify under the, under the existing medical...
Standards.
Right. You have to, you have to, you have to meet, you have to meet the medical, you have to satisfy the medical criteria.
Exactly.
Uh, in order to, and that's just, and that's just for the first two years. Then after, then after two years, then, you know, you, you don't have to...
We could've...
...satisfy the, 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 the medical requirements in order to get licensed recreationally.
This, so as I understand, the state, as I understand, the state Prop 1, it did not require it to be sold at a medicinal facility. It did not require it in Prop 1. And that's by putting it in, in one establishment, well, matter of fact, Laura hasn't even written the rules yet. They've, the final rules, have they been drafted out and released to the public yet?
Yes.
They, they, yes, they do, they do, they did publish rules in, uh, July.
Is that the emergency rules? They put the temporary emergency rules or the permanent rules?
They are, I think they're captioned as emergency rules.
Exactly.
But they are the rules that, that are in place now and that, that, that apply.
But they're not the permanent rules.
Hard to say.
Exactly.
They're, they're captioned as emergency...
They're the existing rules.
They're the rules, they're the only rules that they have right now.
You know, my, my last concern, wait, 'cause I finished my discussion.
Okay.
So I'll be done in a second. So, you know, and I think more importantly, right now, we're actively engaged in a lawsuit where some serious allegations are being made against the city in regards to marijuana. And I think doing anything around this before we have resolution to that litigation would not be the most prudent thing to do because we could be putting ourselves, if we lose that case, we could be putting ourselves back in the same situation. Putting the city more in financial harm before that decision, by, before that case is settled.
Okay.
I, I don't think the, the, the pending litigation is going to have much of an impact on, uh, on the recreational. Uh, what's gonna happen is, is that the state is going to start, uh, issuing state licenses, uh, what I'm told, that they're, they're gonna start doing that in December. And that, one of the differences between the recreational act and the medical act is in the, for the medical facilities, you had to opt, the, 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 the local communities had to opt in, which means that you had to adopt an ordinance saying, "We're going to allow this." So if you did nothing, then you would, you were essentially prohibiting all, you were essentially prohibiting medical facilities within the, uh, within your community. Uh, it's the opposite with, with the recreational facilities. If you don't have an ordinance in place, then the state will start making those decisions for you. They will be approving facilities in your community unless you've adopted an ordinance that either says, "We don't want them at all," or if we do want them, "We want to limit them in a certain way." We want to limit the number and we want to limit the, uh, we want to place limitations on the, uh, time, uh, place and manner that they're being operated as well. So what this ordinance does is it, is it allows us to place some, have some limit, some local limitations in place that would, uh, uh, that would, uh, you know, limit the num, most importantly, limit the number of, of facilities that, that, that could open in the city of Wild Lake. Otherwise, it's gonna be pretty much left entirely up to the discretion of the state as to how many and where, uh, they're gonna go in the city if, if you, if you don't have an ordinance like this in place.
So, so my point of inquiry to follow up then is, to find understanding correct, is the state requiring recreational marijuana facilities to be at a medic, medicinal marijuana establishment? Is that a yes or a no?
They, uh, they, that I don't know. I, I don't know. All I can tell you is what we're allowed to do locally, how we're allowed to regulate locally. We can't, we can't change what this, what the state is or isn't going to do. That's their own rules and that's their own licensing process. What the act does is, is it allows the city to limit the number and the location of the facilities, and that's what this ordinance does.
My understanding and the contact that I've had with the state and questions that I've asked is that for the first two years, it will be sold only at medical facilities. Whether I'm getting the right information.
It's gonna have, it's, they're, they're only going to be issuing recreational licenses to people who meet the, who meet the criteria and who qualify under the medical regulations. So you have to, you have to be approved medically in order to get approved recreationally.
The criteria is applied to the medicinal facilities is what's being applied to, someone applying for recreational.
You have to qualify for medical to qualify for recreational.
As the attorney said, they're not...
And they're gonna collect, my understanding is they're collecting for two applications, two licenses.
Bottom line is, is we wanna limit and have some limitations on how many facilities we have. And that's what this ordinance will do.
Right. If, if we don't do it, we're gonna have six facilities.
And I think it's important that the ballot initiative, unless you wanna see eight facilities, I believe it's a vote of no, right? I would think that would be the way it'll be worded. The ballot initiative that's going to be on the ballot in November, if you vote yes or the, in, in the positive way, there will be eight facilities that will be in our city and will be controlled by the...
There'll be 11 facilities under the...
Well, that's right.
Three plus six. It is very important to not approve that.
We'll have, you'll have the medical, you'll have the ballot initiative. And if you prohibit them or somehow believe that they shouldn't get recreational, now you're talking about 11 facilities in the small city of Wild Lake.
That's too many.
Wild West.
Well, again, the, the law doesn't require it to be at the same facility as we just heard, the criteria. We're designing an ordinance that's tailoring it to be exclusively at the same facility as outlined in the section.
So then what you're saying is you want six facilities?
No, you're putting words in my mouth. What I'm saying is we're designing an ordinance with pending litigation before us that's alleging some very bad misdeeds. And if we design an ordinance before that litigation is settled, we could be back in the same boat where we have designed this ordinance to meet, and allegation can be made, we're designing it to meet the needs and, and misinterpret it.
No, we're designing the ordinance to limit the number in the city.
I, I, I understand that, but it's at the same facility. So I have other points of discussion on this ordinance as well.
I thought you said you had two. You got more?
That was only the questions about the same facility.
Okay.
So on page 72, it's in section 18404, paragraph A. It states that the consultant reviews may be obtained, which is great, but I think it's a little too vague and we need some specifics around the criteria of a consultant. So I moved to amend this paragraph to read excluding consultants currently involved in any way with any existing marijuana facilities, including owners, members, trustees, officers and shareholders.
What part exactly?
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Bennett.
Section, page 72, section 18404. It's very vague as far as what qualifies as a consultant.
18404A, page 72.
Yes.
Right. Well, well, the intent is, is that it's intended to refer to, uh, the city consultants such Well, the intent is, is that it's intended to refer to the city consultants such as the engineer, the planner. Those are the.
So can we insert that verbiage in there? I mean, it's kind of vague.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
It's just very vague. You know, what is the consultant? I haven't sure it's not.
What section, what sub-paragraph is that?
It's in A.
A?
Yeah, it's the last sentence in A.
Correct.
Well, it's the city department heads, and, I mean, it sort of goes together, department heads and consultants.
Right, we can clarify, we can put city consultants.
That's exactly.
Don't we need to make a motion for that? Don't we need to make a motion?
I don't think we need to make a motion.
I did make the motion to move to amend it. So I make a motion, amend my motion?
What is your motion?
Well, I was inserting the language, no, not to have any ties to existing marijuana facilities, including owners, operators, et cetera, and to amend it to read city consultants.
I think it says city consultants.
It kind of does, but it's very vague.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with putting the word city in front of the word consultant. I mean, it.
Anybody that.
We can do that, we can do that.
Anybody that the city manager consults with becomes a city consultant.
As I read it.
By the fact that he's consulting them.
Well, the intent is, is to use the city consultants, which would be like the planner and the engineer.
Maybe there's someone outside of the city.
Like you said, Van.
That's why.
Just insert city.
I don't care.
Just put city in front of the consultants.
I'm not going to.
Bring it back to us at the next, for a second reading.
If there's support on the motion.
If we were using city consultants.
If there's support on the motion. If you made your motion, I'm asking for support.
That's when the discussion's supposed to happen, after this.
I need support.
You're killing the clock.
It dies for lack of support.
Okay, done. I think it's the same thing.
Okay. One last thing on page 70, 18402, Paragraph B. The, it outlines the operating fee, the annual operating fee. I think it needs additional verbiage inserted in there. I believe we need to, you know, not constrict the city and insert the verbiage in there that I moved to amend the section, this section with the wording, "The city reserves the right to increase the fees 10% each year."
I thought the state set the fees to match.
Yeah, the amount of the, the amount of the yearly fee that the city can charge is established and set by a state statute, which is currently $5,000 a year. So that's, that's the cap. That's the current cap.
The state can raise theirs seemingly, but the city doesn't have that right until they give it to us.
The state allows more than we can amend at any time.
Right.
You know, to match the state.
If they change the ruling, then we can change and do that.
Call the question.
Okay, roll call.
Are we doing roll call on the question or?
He called the question.
Called the question.
Roll call vote, please.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Lost my agenda in the process here.
That was a vote on the quest, called a question, now the vote on the ordinance, as I understand.
No, that was the question.
No, there was, no.
I thought we had a vote, as I understand the rules, to call the question of our vote to end the discussion.
No, that died.
Okay.
Right, lack of support.
So was there, was there a vote on first reading?
I thought when he called the question, it was first reading. He called for a vote.
Okay.
He called the question.
All right, so you voted on first reading?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just, I just wanted to make sure. The second item I had to report on is the, the status of the litigation that Council Member Costanzo had mentioned earlier. The court, there are, there's two principal defendants in the case. There's the city and a number of individual city elected officials and employees that are named. And then there's also a, a second defendant named in the lawsuit as well, the greenhouse. All the parties to the, to the litigation had filed motions asking that the claims asserted against them be dismissed. So the city filed a motion for summary disposition, asking that all the claims asserted against the city and the city defendants be dismissed. The greenhouse filed a motion asking that all the claims asserted against the greenhouse be dismissed. There were also counterclaims that were brought against the plaintiff. And the plaintiff filed a motion asking that the counterclaims asserted against the plaintiff also be dismissed. All three of those motions were heard back in the middle of July. A couple of weeks ago, the plaintiffs, which in my opinion was sort of anticipation, realizing that they were on shaky ground, filed an amended complaint against the city to add an additional count of gross negligence. That amended complaint did not apply to the, to the co-defendant, the greenhouse. So the court went ahead and issued a ruling on the motion that the greenhouse had filed asking that the claims against it be dismissed. And what the court found is that the civil conspiracy claims, which includes both the city and the greenhouse alleging that there was some sort of, you know, illegal or wrongful conspiracy, the court found that those, that the civil conspiracy claims alleged in the plaintiff's complaint were faulty and defective. So that we now have a court ruling that has found that the civil conspiracy count, although technically it only applied to the greenhouse's motion, but it's, it's, it's a ruling that the civil conspiracy count, which was alleged against collectively against the city and the greenhouse, is defective and fails to state, and fails to state a claim. It fails, it simply fails to state an actionable claim of civil conspiracy. So I am, there's, I think it's, I think it's, I don't think there's any way that the court, when it decides the city's motion, that it can't come, that it could come to any different conclusion. The city is withholding ruling on the city's motion because they added this additional count of gross negligence and the court gave the city the opportunity to file, to amend its motion for summary disposition to address this new count. So the court's kind of holding the city's motion in abeyance, waiting for us to brief the amendment and the complaint before it issues a ruling on the, on the city's motion. But, but it's good news for the city that the court has found that the, that the civil conspiracy that has been alleged against the city is defective and fails to state a claim.
Nice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all you have this evening? Okay. Okay, unfinished business. We're back to the resolution to withdraw from the trail. Do I have, I have a hand? Yes.
You've got your city manager in a really awkward position here. I just approved $50,000 from other parts of the budget to meet the requirements of our contract. You need to kill this resolution. You need to, you need to take a vote on it. That means motion to pass it, get a second, and then vote it down. If you want to come back later, and I'm no support of this extra layer of government, but I can't travel comfortably in the future spending money on my, although I believe, you know, it's fine, but I spent $50,000 and took it from other places.
$45,000.
Now, there's more than that coming, there's more.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and these are all additional.
No, there is a cost, that's, that's, we all agree. I think we would all agree if I just spent $50,000. But what you're doing here is you're, you're creating the illusion that we're getting out, we're not out, the people have embraced the trail, what they haven't embraced is the way it was handled. That's a different issue.
Right.
And so the trail has always been part of the city's plan and, and what they're doing now is still different, but there's not going to be a depot, there's not, but there is going to be a trailhead and we're going to make it next door, if I can get the vote. But you need to put this to rest and we need to embrace the council, the trail council as long as we can. We've already spent this year's money, so they keep billing us and they will.
So am I correct? We need a motion.
You need a motion to call for vote. You know, you can, don't table it, get rid of it. End, end that, this is kind of a charade. You know, if I'm still spending money while you're talking about for three months.
What do you want the motion?
Put it up, make a motion, either kill it or not. You know, if it fails.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Make a motion to pass the resolution, then vote no.
Make a motion to withdraw and then.
No, 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 no.
Adopt that resolution, get a second, and then vote it down.
That's what the resolution is.
No, this resolution is to get us out of the trail and what he's saying is to vote the thing down.
That's what I just said.
Well, say something, we'll vote.
Casey, help us out here, make that motion.
A resolution to, of the city council of the city of Wild Lake to withdraw from the Commerce, Wild Lake, and Wickham Trailway Management Council, Resolution 2019-2.
If you vote yes, you're pulling out of the trail council.
We need, we need support. Did somebody support it?
Come on, give us a second.
Okay, now we have a support, now you can talk, Bennett.
Right.
The.
Now vote no.
Well, I think we all understand that now, that's, that's the way to stay. Well, what about, wait, my question, the whole concept of pulling out was because of our, we're 10% of the population, we're 10% of the, of the tax base, yet we're paying 33% of the cost. So we're still in it for 33. I just want to make sure.
We have not amended the agreement.
I know, the agreement is still that old agreement.
Right, and that, that agreement was established before.
Oh, one at a time.
I'm honoring the agreement, that's why I moved the money from different cost centers in, in our general fund budget to be able to pay that because I have to honor the contract. That's our first obligation, you honor contracts, then the Constitution of the United States, you honor the, and so the money's moved there. This is an awkward kind of thing because folks are looking at it, think we're getting out, so why do we pay it? Not everybody's in favor of the trail, remember, they voted trail mileage down, so spending your general fund, when you got a motion, it looks like, talk about how it looks, let's put it to rest and then you can revisit this thing. I do believe that we have failed to maintain the leverage we needed to get a better deal. I do not believe, I'm suggesting we get out because we need to embrace it to get it done. But in the future, you need to think about whether you're in the trail, if that extra lever of government.
Let's get it, let's get it finished.
Let's call the question here and just.
Well, I need to add to that too, from the last trail meeting, all right? Director Scott brought back to us the comments that were made at his board, okay? That ongoing after this, after this trail is all built, we will possibly be funding our own section, our maintenance and our repairs, okay, based on our ability to generate revenues.
Of course they are.
Okay, well, that's, you know.
That's exactly what you said was going to happen.
That's what I've been telling you from the beginning.
You've been taking us for a ride.
Well, it's not taking us for a ride, we've got the trail done, we were fortunate that the actual costs were substantially below what the original estimates were, okay, and that the feds agreed to give us the full amount, which reduced our obligation from the half a million to a couple hundred thousand, okay?
It would have been the same if we had a better formula. We have an.
I know. Unfortunately, that deal was cut before us.
Anyway, I'll say, you know my position on it, we're all for the trail, we're not for the, you know, if the government's going to continue, I don't like the idea that the council is ready to kill it, but I'm still spending money on the trail.
So at this point.
You're voting no.
If we want to kill this ongoing resolution, you vote no.
Correct.
Okay, which is what I said to begin with. Okay, roll call, please.
Well, if I may, on the discussion, I didn't want to interrupt. So as far as the trailway council goes, you know, the trailway council, I know what the other communities are thinking, you know, it's been a struggle to get to this point, you know, and they're expressing some frustration at the events over the past year. But I will say that the best-run trail councils, they have a trail, the best-run trails have a trail council. And I think with the three communities in it, even beyond after that, after the trail path is developed, will help on phase two of what was discussed over the past year. The trail councils do take the pressure off the local communities by, if you go for grants, instead of one community having to chip in just the local match by themselves, it's divvied up by three. So the burden and the stress, the financial stress is taken off of the trail council. So we may be killing this today, but when we get to that point in the future, we want to, we want to think about this.
Well, we need to see how the agreement comes out before we go any further.
We may be kicking in at the benefit of our neighbors.
Are we ready for a vote? Roll call, please.
Robertson?
No.
Ambrose?
No.
Costanzo?
No.
Locke?
No.
Lublin?
No.
Osneck?
No.
Ackley?
No.
Okay. This is now removed from the agenda for a while.
We'll be on next month's agenda. Yeah, get it off the agenda for a long time.
Get all the bills paid and let us know.
For months.
Okay, next up is item number two, sidewalks and crosswalks.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I submitted that agenda change and just a quick update, you know, I am concerned about the condition of our city sidewalks. I know that it was alluded to earlier of where the monies are coming from, where they may come, but we have to find a solution for it because it is a public safety and a liability issue, especially with our crosswalks and missing so many ADA strips. So I don't know, I guess I'm asking for, where are we at on addressing that safety issue and liability issue?
Well, I think the city manager has already stated he had to remove some money and I think he's got to do some, since that just happened, I would suggest that we give him a little time to, to work on the issue and, and report back with what his management thoughts are.
Well, I have no problem, I mean, if there's a, if there's a public safety issue, I mean, his view or my view may be different about, but what's immediate is we deal with immediate, regardless of the money, I move the money again, you know. The issue is, is we have, we have spent more on sidewalk improvement and ADA improvements in, in the city than ever in the history of the city. We put sidewalks everywhere, we fix them, but we didn't stop doing that, it's just the priorities get shifted and some of them do go bad. We're still in the business of fixing sidewalks, we fix them regularly, it just depends on where we go. I mean, we just did sidewalks in cooperation with another community and it, and some of those weren't ADA, but it's the same difference. So we're working on the sidewalk. I can't tell him, I didn't look to see which specific sidewalk was fixed this week or last week, but we're not out of the sidewalk business, we're in the business. I simply am telling you, we took a lot of money out of, of the other parts of our general fund to fund the trail because that was unbudgeted. But we're not out of the business fixing sidewalks, we'll be fixing, and any ADA, any ADA issues that is a public safety issue, we fix immediately. So the answer is, we're still on it.
Okay, item number three.
The, that was the Supreme Court ruling, Reed versus Tana Gilbert. You know, last meeting, I handed the court ruling, I was going to hand to the city attorney and, or the city clerk, I handed the city attorney, and I was wondering what we're after, an update for it. Before I go, if I could hand the Supreme Court ruling to our city clerk to enter into the record, just so we have it. I have concerns around what has transpired since I brought this up last meeting and my concerns around our ordinance and the ruling by the Supreme Court, meaning that political speech is protected free speech on private property. You know, I'm receiving lots of calls from residents that the city is driving around taking photos in front of residents' homes since that discussion last month. I, you know, that, to me, when I hear that, I get concerned, I don't know how accurate that is, but it seems to be a lot of residents saying that. So I guess my question would be, multiple faceted question, where are we at on that resolving if our ordinance is in violation of that Supreme Court ruling and who, if and who directed people from the city to take photos in front of residents' homes? It's just, you know, a lot of residents feel intimidated when they see that, and I hope that's not true.
Well, I don't see a problem if the city takes photos if they're.
With the purpose of taking a photo.
But Van, I'd like you to report on that if you would.
Um, yes, what the, the Tana Gilbert opinion, basically, what it says is that, you know, any type of a content-based sign ordinance or regulation potentially can run afoul of the, of the First Amendment. And, and that's where the, you know, that's where the concern comes in when you have an ordinance that, that regulates signs differently based on the content that's, that's displayed on the sign itself, such as, such as a, a political sign. That would, that would probably be considered a content-based regulation. And there is, and that's really what it comes down to for purposes of deciding whether or not an ordinance does or does not run afoul of the First Amendment. Does it, does it, does it make a, is it content neutral or is it a content-based type of regulation? In the, in the, in the case of Wagner versus City of Garfield Heights, which is a U.S. Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals opinion that came out shortly after the Tana Gilbert opinion, and this is, this is the circuit that covers the state of Michigan. They, that court sort of addressed that issue. Tana Gilbert doesn't really talk about a content neutral versus a content-based type of regulation, but, but the Wagner opinion does. And basically what happened in that case is someone had a political sign out in front of their house that was 16 square feet. The local ordinance said that political signs were limited to six square feet, but it had a, it had a content neutral sign ordinance that applied to all signs that said, signs cannot exceed 12 square feet. So what the Sixth Circuit said is they said, okay, the political sign ordinance, because it's a content-based regulation, runs afoul of the First Amendment, but the other ordinance that is not a content-based regulation, that says signs, all signs can't be more than 12 square feet, does pass muster under the Constitution and therefore that ordinance was upheld and the political sign, because it exceeded, because it was 16 square feet, the court found that it violated the ordinance. that it, that it violated the ordinance. Now, in the, in, under the city's ordinances, what the city's ordinances say is that temporary signs are prohibited in residential zoning districts. That is a content-neutral regulation. It is not in any way based on the content of the sign itself. And it defines a temporary sign as a sign that is not permanently affixed to the ground or a structure, which would obviously apply to political signs, because political signs by their nature are, are temporary signs. They're not permanently affixed to, to the ground or to a structure. And then the ordinance goes on to say, temporary signs are, all temporary signs are prohibited, except as provided by the remainder of this ordinance, and the, and the political sign ordinance creates an exception, saying it, it, that, you know, even though this is a temporary sign that would otherwise be banned, you can display it anyway, subject to, to the limitations that of, you know, 30 days before the election, 10 days after. So it is a permissive rather than a restrictive ordinance. It, it, it allows something that would otherwise be prohibited. So for that reason, it could be argued that it does not violate the First Amendment because it doesn't restrict First Amendment rights. It actually, it actually permits something that would otherwise be prohibited. If it was found to be unconstitutional, what would happen is, is that the exception to the temporary sign prohibition would fail, and what that would mean is that all political signs, at all times, would be banned in residential neighborhoods. So it's either 30 days before, 10 days after, or if that doesn't, if that ordinance fails, then you can't have them at all. So in my opinion, I think the better approach would be to say that because the sign, because the political sign ordinance is permissive rather than restrictive, it is therefore, would therefore survive constitutional, any type of a constitutional attack. That could be challenged. A court could disagree with that. They could, court could say, okay, even though it's permissive, it still is a content-based regulation, and it still is regulatory, based on content. But like I said, if, if that would be the court's ruling, if that would be the outcome, what that means is that you couldn't have any political signs in, in a residential neighborhood at all. But, but I do think the, I do think the ordinance should be amended in some way so that it's not, so that it doesn't make a content-based distinction.
Exactly. But from what you're saying, it is okay to set the 30-day limitation?
I think, I think, I think that is a, that's a, that's a meritorious legal argument that could be made, because I, because like I said, it's, it's a, it's a, it's not a restrictive ordinance, it's a permissive ordinance.
Okay.
So, but, but like I said, I mean, a court could still disagree, and until someone challenges the ordinance and a court makes a ruling that, that the, that our sign ordinance is invalid, runs afoul of the First Amendment, then it does carry the stat, it does carry the legal presumption of constitutional validity, and therefore, it could, you could continue to enforce it until a court says you can't.
Okay. But at this point, we are not enforcing it on private property, am I correct?
We have, I can, I can respond to a little bit of that. The enforcement issue, and I said it at one of the meetings prior, there will be enforcement on private, on public property, because we had that experience before, where the candidates were putting their signs on city property and using city resources to spotlight their signs to get it one up on the other candidates. That's wrong on several counts, ethically and legally, it's wrong. We are aware that our signs app, each candidate obviously had to issue the signs, that's a presumption on my part, but the citizens didn't go get the signs. The candidates took the signs to the homeowner. We have signs all over. No signs have been taken, or no tickets have been issued for people who have the signs in their yard. We have numerous signs that are in violation right now. I do not, as city manager, public safety director, or the police chief, we don't have the luxury of citing a Supreme Court case and declaring that our ordinance is in violation. We have the duty to presume that it's valid until a court has struck it down. They have not done that. The, there has been no challenge to our ordinance, other than the kind of a naked requirement that our ordinance is in violation. It's not in violation. So it would only be struck down by a judge. On the other hand, we haven't written any tickets for it. We have used as much discretion as we could in not enforcing that. We are keeping track. There are people who ignore the ordinance because they believe they have a special right. And, and, and as the lawyer said, if they go to court, they might win. But right now, they're in violation. And there are, there's several of them. They're not all over, but there's, there's a few cases. But we've not cited anybody. Nobody's been dragged to court or anything like that. But we are aware of it, and I made it a point, to, to point out that the ones that we will strictly enforce, well, any signs that are on the city's property or other people's property, we're getting in, you know, some people are putting signs up when they didn't get permission from that owner. So I, I don't know, unless somebody challenges it, you know.
What about any right of way? Whether it be city, county, or we.
Well, any right of way.
Any right of way. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. I just want to know if we were removing them from any right of way.
We would confiscate the signs, and if we can identify who placed it there, perhaps a citation, but that, it's in violation. And the people who are doing that, the people who are issuing the signs in violation ordinance, these are the people who are running for office. They ought to try to change the ordinance, if they can do that, because it's a political decision. You can get the votes, you change the ordinance. But you, the ordinance was there long before I got here. It's probably been around for years. I don't know the exact date, but it's there for a reason. It's for zoning reasons. And there was a time in the past where we harassed some poor woman almost to death because she was putting garage signs all over town, and she was getting, you know, harassed and terrorized, quite literally. We're out of that business, and we're not terrorizing the candidates. If they want to put them up, then they can fight that fight. Nobody's gotten a ticket, but we will enforce them if they're on the public right of way.
So, Madam Mayor, then I think as a council, we should not wait for any candidates to get elected to office? We should be addressing that because it is an issue of free speech on private property. Whatever that ordinance says, do we actually agree with it? That is a good ordinance to have on our books? We have other signs that are out throughout the city year-round, so those are protected by free speech, but political signs, whether it be for a candidate or a political issue, should not be banned by any ordinance. We need to amend that. This council, we don't need to wait for any other future councils.
What signs do we have out year-round?
There are signs around the city. You could drive around all the time, whether it be on Maple, whether it be, on, just drive around the city. You'll see them up, whether it be easel signs, yard signs, whether it be paint color signs, there's, there's signs out, whether it be wire. There are signs out year-round, and we all know what the signs are.
Well, that's Councilman Costanzo's opinion, okay? If he wants the law changed, file a suit, take it to court, let it run its course. Right now, the city has an ordinance that we ask everybody to abide by. We also got the same issues where people think that that's nothing but a disgrace as far as, what do they call that? Almost litter, in regards to all the signs that go up, when they go up for those 30 days, they can't wait till the election's over to take them down. All right? So, you know, file, get a lawyer, file a suit, and, you know, take your course with the law.
I, I think that this body, we should not depend on the residents to file a suit. We, as a body, that is on private property. I'm not talking, I understand the right of way, and that is actually what the Supreme Court ruling identifies. We can limit on public right-of-way, and the size, up to four by eight, 32 square feet. But on private property, we, as a body, have a responsibility to look at that, because we all swore, both swore an oath under the Constitution when we took office, and I think that this runs afoul, and our city attorney actually alluded to that. We have a responsibility to fix that ordinance, and we should start looking at that now, not waiting for residents to file court. Because really, the working men and women of this town aren't going to go foul, they don't have the money to go and file suits.
I guess I wasn't quite understanding the city attorney, maybe, I thought he said at this point, he does not think that our, our ordinance is in violation.
Well, do we think, he has his, our city attorney has an opinion, do we think?
I have neighbors that are appalled by all the signs. Okay. Are you going to make a motion?
Yes. I am going to make the motion.
If you make a motion, you get support, fine. If you don't, the discussion's over with.
I understand. I move to amend our local side ordinance to not ban political signs on private property as that is protected free speech afforded under the Constitution, as well as what's in our oath of office.
Is there support for the motion? Is there any support for the motion? Motion dies for lack of support. We'll move on to new, we move on to.
Support.
Please. I don't think you're on the city council, but that's okay. New business, item number one, ratifying the agreement with the Wall Lake Firefighters Association.
That's me.
That's you?
Well, it wasn't him.
It's not him?
I was just looking.
He's only the firefighter.
What is wrong with everybody tonight?
Why is that? In the water?
It must be in the water.
We have an agreement, we don't need to discuss them both.
Okay.
We put together what we believe is a solid agreement, supporting our, our firefighters. Both the, the unions are happy. We believe that they enjoy 73% support. We, we've improved their contract a tad. We didn't give away the store, it's not the Cadillac that it used to be, but we restored a couple of benefits and, and improved the benefits for the paid, the professional paid-on-call. So it's a recommend, my recommendation is the Public Safety Director to approve both of them as you get there. And I'll let Jim, you can add anything about your people, what they got to say about it. I don't know if there's any firemen in the audience, maybe not. They're expecting to, to pass.
I think they worked over the last several months with Chelsea and her team, and with, with the contract, and they all seem very happy with the outcome of it. And I appreciate it, if you vote for it.
Is there a motion to approve the?
I will do that. A resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Michigan Association of Firefighters, MAFF, on behalf of the Wall Lake Firefighters Association, beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2023, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, this being Resolution 2019-39.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes. Okay, we have a second agreement for the paid-on-call and part-time firefighters. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes. Our last resolution is the 2019-41 Lakes Area Youth Assistance. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support? Any discussion?
We don't need to, that's routine stuff. You've been done, you've done this many times.
Got it every year.
Or so, unless you want.
Okay.
And they are very appreciative.
Pardon me?
And they are very appreciative.
Thank you for that comment. Okay.
Roll, roll call.
I don't know why everybody's whispering, but I can't hear you.
Ross Hall.
Thank you.
He's supposed to.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, might I comment on the previous question that was, before we leave tonight, I'd like to explain to the council what happened with the fire negotiations. For the first time in 10 years, my management team did the entire negotiation with the assistance of the city attorney. Every piece of it was done by the team that's sitting over there. They're completely independent, so when you send me home, you still have a good team. They're in place now. I, I'm proud of what they did. The city attorney has fully replaced the special labor attorneys who spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for. So that whole thing got done with the team. They just told me where they were. Not too much input this time, other than, you know, how's it affect the budget? We believe it'll do that, but I'm proud of, the, the team leader for the fire was actually the chief. Which one? Who led that? They, they did what's not really a good idea, but we had to put them, you know, trial by fire. When, when management is actually part of the team, it gets pretty crusty, it gets nasty. That's why they don't like me that much. But I did it in order to get the adjustments that we needed to save the team. These guys did a great job, all of them, all of them sitting over there, including the city attorney. You will never need a, as long as you keep that team, you'll never need a special labor lawyer to come in and pay hundreds of dollars per hour to negotiate contracts. So I'm proud of them, and I thank for that. You got a good team over, and they proved it with these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. Tamara?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Bennett?
Just a nice job getting the contracts completed.
Pop?
I have nothing.
Casey?
The trails move along great. We have concerns around the deeper area, but it doesn't need to be the end.
Casey, for the record, as far as labor relations attorneys, that was a yearly expense between $100,000 and $300,000 a year. He handled union negotiations, grievances, and any issue that had to do with employees. That expense is no longer incurred by the city, based on the city manager's performance and training of his staff and administration. Okay, so that's for the record. Yeah, I believe you could be an additional compensator.
I, I appreciate that, and it is absolutely true, that two years prior to my arrival, you spent a quarter of a million dollars on outside labor counts. A quarter of a million dollars. Since my arrival, you spent nothing, other than the $40 he charged me to call me to introduce himself.
Well, I've sat in those meetings, okay, where the, the labor relations attorney said, you can pay me, or you can pay them. Somebody said, well, we don't want to waste any more of your time. And he said, by all means, you're not wasting my time.
No.
Okay, at $300 an hour. Okay, so, just for the record. Okay, so, thank you. That was Eddie. We've got another comment, too. I wish Ms. Tina, that didn't want to give her name, and Ms. Michelle C. Emprey would have stuck around, because at the last council meeting, we had Mr. Greenwall opinion that there were rumors flying around, this is a quote from the minutes, there were rumors flying around of nonsense of him being a disgruntled past employee. Candidate Greenwall said that he is available for questions, as is not true. Candidate Greenwall denied that he was a disgruntled past employee with the city and stated, I was laid off and found a much better job in a larger city. Well, since then, it was brought to my attention that there was a website set up called Save Wald Lake. On this website, you can find the police report and the incident report concerning Mr. Greenwall that was laid off. From what I found was that he was originally fired for some inappropriate sexual activities to other DPW employees, okay? There are numerous allegations that you can go on and read. Read them, savewaldlake.com, okay? Listen, read them, all right? If you want to read them, okay? This is council comments. He asked if we had any questions. I wish he was here, but where is he? Okay, let me finish, okay? These are so egregious.
Please, please.
Mr. Greenwall that was laid off. From what I found was that he was originally fired for some inappropriate sexual activities to other DPW employees, okay? There are numerous allegations that you can go on and read. Read them, savewaldlake.com, okay? Listen, read them, all right? If you want to read them, okay? This is council comments. He asked if we had any questions. I wish he was here, but where is he? Okay, let me finish, okay? These are so egregious...
Please, please.
These comments are so egregious and disgusting that I don't believe majority of the people could read these and get through them.
It's called respect.
Let me tell you something, these are, if it's a lie, he has signed an affidavit stating them to be true, and he was then reinstated and said that he was only suspended, okay? That's the way it worked out, all right? I would just suggest that anybody go read savewaldlake.com, okay? And take it for what it's worth. Create your own opinion after that, okay? Then you can come in there in the next council comments and make your opinions.
Do one of our officers please want to get some order in the, in the room? So, this council is set here with no comment during all the audience participation.
I am just responding to his, I was laid off and found a much better job. Where here it says that he was fired and then reinstated, okay? Well, then what is it? It's a sworn affidavit, then these people were lying and it's a sworn affidavit, okay? So that, for the record, is what it is. He asked if there were any additional comments. I found them, here they are. Okay, so...
Thank you. I'm sorry, but council was very respectful to the audience, and if they can't give the same respect after I've asked them three times. Do you have anything else, Casey?
I wish it'd be enough for anybody reads it.
John?
After that, I have no comment.
Okay. I do have a couple comments. One, Casey beat me to the event at the trail this morning, and he left, and then I showed up once I found out where I was going. And I stayed till about 11 o'clock, there was a lot of riders. Mr. Levine, who was supposed to be there today, was ill, he's one of the major contributors to the trail, and he wasn't able to make it, but they all were very happy, very, they thought the, the shirts were very nice. John showed them to everybody who arrived at the Wickham Park, and then he was going to hang on to them. I guess they have a dinner every night, so rather than wad them up in their little bike bags that were going to be handed out tonight at dinner. So it was a great event. I guess I call myself the last council person standing, who was one of the yes votes for the property next door, that we call the farmer's market, or going to be the new police-fire-veteran memorial. So I would like to say thank you to Mr. Witt and the staff and the committee for finding, maybe not the perfect use for the property, but a great use for the property. I think by the time we would have done the mediation, put it on the market, we'd have probably had as much in it as we did when we bought it. And as we can see by the former school building in Wall Lake, property is not selling real